Yes. Up then. President. Watch. In. We have corners. Okay, this is not really the agenda I need to add to the agenda. The preliminary report on William. New progress of the bank and I'll add that if there's no objection to the consent calendar. As our and also as part of the consent calendar, I'd like to know the so many organized for early exam and if you score more information and the commercial warrants through April for associated student body. For the all the sites for more information. Any questions about that?
I know the question is, so we're moving forward because me I have more questions than others. There's plenty of time as I'm talking.
Oh, I just wondered if we could give. I need more. No, I don't, I think I need more, I need more communication. Oh, oh, I mean. I mean, and that's. And so do I hear the motion? Do you adopt the agenda with those changes? I'm what I'd like to a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of the Williams report for consent agenda and to pull those two items that are currently on the consent agenda, one to be pulled for more information and one to be pulled the warrants for ASB for Terry to she has questions and that's all I have.
So.
No, it's not tell me 28, that's only because not only that the mini clarification. Well, I'm hoping that getting all paperwork very quickly, we can always do a straw. But I can go as soon enough to get that satisfaction.
If we've started in discussion and now I would maybe give some information.
Yeah, we can do this in discussion if you want, so we want to move the filter to the discussion. Now number three discussion. Well, do I hear? Do understand that they hear that Patty for moving the bill trip to the discussion so we can have discussion. Okay, and now do I hear a motion? To approve the agenda with those changes?
Almost.
Oh, yeah, okay. I have a motion made by trustee Richard Fink by trustee McLaughlin. To approve the. Agenda today with those changes and the changes again are Patty's quarterly report on William complaints. To the consent agenda, I mean, off the consent agenda, this is a big organized bill trip to the discussion. Number three and pulling the merchant warrants through ASB. So that we can do that. So they will actually go being down to action. All the way there. Any notes? Hearing that, who should have approved? On the information discussion and course, on the agenda, we have the KTJ USD emergency awareness for parents and guardians. Of course, discussion, do I have any ones that has any discussion regarding that? I did see some edits that first of all, please, that later, did anybody want to add any comments at all to that? Next, we have the session about charter schools, presenter is Ronald Juliet. Pronounced my S is. If you, there she is, and we have her on Zoom. Wonder if we can turn that meeting a little bit so that my. I don't see the same. Or was it all to us? So, well, that's good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Juliet. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank all of you for making a some time for me to talk a little bit this evening. I know that there's been some discussion, informal discussion with myself and the tribal education department about the fact of a possible charter school in Hoopa. There was a grant that was that came about through philanthropy. It wasn't state or federal, anything like that. Unfortunately, that that application closed, but it was a planning grant to look at a possibility of a charter school in Hoopa. And I understand that, you know, a lot of staff, everybody's very busy. And after talking with Frank a little bit more, I thought, well, you know, let's, you know, possibly talk to the trustees, to you all about the possibility. I think I know everybody in the room. I'm not sure. Is there anybody that doesn't know me by chance? Okay, perfect. So anyway, wanted to run it by the trustees to see how you feel about a charter school. I believe there was some informal discussion with with some of you and superintendent Lane, and I think it's worth taking a look at, you know, like, do a feasibility, let's do some research, is, you know, does it make sense for our students? Does it make sense for the school district? So I'm willing to donate my time to to research this a little bit. It it will require some coordination with some of the administrative staff, you know, superintendent, just to get some data and some information about it. But I know there's a lot of uncertainty right now, you know, around education in general. I've just done a little bit of research on it. And I feel like there might be a possibility when we talk about the fiscal portion of it, that, you know, maybe we get chartered through the county rather than the school district, you know, due to the lack of resource. So I just wanted to run that by you, see how you all felt. And if it's something you, you know, want to move forward with, I can definitely help out in that area.
Have any questions, Juliet?
You said that that grant passed already. Is there another one coming up?
It will come up in the fall, late fall. It'll more than likely come around again, or I want to say around October or November.
That would be needing a building and a classroom and the whole, the whole structure, infrastructure, right?
Not necessarily. I spoke to. Shasta County Charter School. There's a charter school in Shasta County, and I also spoke with, I believe it's called Northern Humboldt Charter School. They actually have the learning center in Willow Creek. But in in, you know, just informal discussion with both of those. Principles for those schools, there's a possibility of either being dependent charter school, which means it's completely underneath the Klamat Trinity Unified School District. It could also be part of a program. If we look at it in that sense that it's dependent, it could be fulfilling a niche or a need that is lacking with the school district right now. The number one flag of concern that comes to my mind is I know that the district has had some issues with. Getting staff. Teachers to fill a lot of position as it is. So that's one area of concern for me when I think about being directly underneath, considered a dependent charter school. But anyhow, there's that possibility. A lot of those schools have start out dependent, filling a niche or a need. And then slowly, in a few years, they become independent. And Frank, that's exactly what you just stated. When you're independent, then yes, you have your own building, you have your own staff, you have your own board. So you're just like a separate school altogether.
I have a question, Juliet. I'm just wondering if from inception, how long do you think something like this would take to plan? And if, you know, after we might start the planning process, or if we were to find that niche, how long is it going to take to to get it going once you start the planning?
Right. So, you know, yeah, that's a really good question. And I don't think there's a definite, you know, answer. I think that's going to take a lot of, what are their priorities right now with our schools? Specifically, I was thinking not so much a charter school that would go K through 12, but it sounds like a lot of attention and areas need to be addressed in K through eight. So depending on the priorities and areas that you all identify. That's where we would pick up and go from, right? And I think it it might make sense fiscally, you know, do do we just need to start out independent altogether and and go the route through the county office of education and be authorized through them? Or do we, you know, share resources and become a program inside Hoopa L? Right? So depending on what the administrators feel that are in those positions, the goals that you all have for K through eight, I think is going to depend on, you know, what is the timeline for that? You know, when does, you know, do we move forward? I think, to me, the first area I would look at is the fiscal resources. And I know that's really up in the air right now with a lot of uncertainty, but that's definitely, I think, a good conversation to have with, you know, Jennifer Lane is, you know, what does she feel, right? She's she's the expert when it comes to KTJ USD. What does she feel? Besides the fact of a school fulfilling a need somewhere, what's what's the fiscal area look like? What does, you know, the staff? Impact look like? So. I I'm guessing that it would take a probably, I would say, in the next, you know, 60 to 90 days to really do like a really rough draft outline of what does a charter school look like in Hoopa? And who's it going to be authorized from? In which area? Right? So, you know, that's, that's kind of like comes into my mind. But again, you know, I'm not an expert. A lot of my leadership and has been around higher ed. You know, my my master's is in higher education leadership. My dissertation was also in higher education leadership, but it focused on our native youth at Hoopa High around post-secondary aspirations and readiness. So that's my background. But, you know, it's a great network down here in the Sacramento area. A lot of people that were in my cohort were K through 12. A lot of them do have charter school. So I have a lot of resources that I can count on people down this way to to try to understand that more. But I think there's so much uncertainty, but I think it's worth the exploration if that's how you all want to move forward.
I'm just wondering, have you, Annalise, have you talked with that at all or not? Or have you got any thoughts on?
Oh, I've, of course, wanted to get emails also presented to both the tribal paging board. I have people writing now. I do know a lot of questions and concerns. I guess one of my main questions that pop up right now is what would be the purpose? Rather than just offering so much to the charter school, what is the purpose of movement? I'm also concerned about resources we can take. And the charter school, so in Hoopa L is another concern I have. I directly have an idea of having something that's separate, whether we have flexibility for working on the policy development that is separate or can be different than standard net code. Which is there with how. The lack of. Private competition for that on the work policy. They create a way to integrate those systems. But right now with this current administration, I'll pay one trial resources to sustain or help that if it can track side. And I also worry about kids.
Thank you. I had some of those same concern also. But I think, Juliet, I think what would be a good idea is if we were able to talk about a little more like with our superintendent, possibly and possibly with Annalise to see if we could think of a purpose. I'm thinking maybe, you know, the independent study or or some type of issue like that, that where students need or, you know, or need to. Maybe do packets and things like that, or. But I don't know if that would be enough to to justify a whole charter school or maybe a independent arm or something like that. So I think that, I think if we could have some discussions and then maybe if you could just follow up with us and, you know, and a timeframe that you think we should have been able to come up with some ideas or talk about it because we don't have our our superintendent here because she might be still. So couldn't we do that? Does everyone think that agree with that? And then, and then can help a follow up? Because I don't want to just drop it. I think that you have, you know, there's could be some good ideas. We can speak more with with Annalise and see if we can find a purpose or if there's, you know, or. Maybe Miss McConnell or someone might have guys on you or.
Sure. Hi Juliet. Check deal. So Northern United Charters is one that Juliet referred to. We have students that attend there that are looking for a long-term independent study program. That's something we are lacking in our district. So I can see that as a potential be. Their model for high school, I'm not real familiar with their elementary model. Their model for high school is independent study tailored to the student. Some of them, it's online, some of them it's packets. And then they have learning centers throughout the county. So the learning centers provide tutoring, counseling services, I'm guessing some other enrichment opportunities. Our closest one is our town. So I think there's huge potential for high school, long-term independent study through a charter. They could hopefully recapture some of the ADA that we're losing. I don't know if that's an ADA issue for in your garden of your faith or not, but potentially Northern United Charters oversees Creekside and Willow Creek. So all those students that should be in our district are losing to another district. So we have a charter within our district. I believe they have a charter with KT. You have a charter with your closest. District, but because people have a charter program, they go with the coast. So it could really help the district financially, but I'm not an expert in that area at all. I definitely like the idea of exploring more of the baseball. We'll work with Juliet on, like she would say, her dissertation work. It was really nice to have her on campus and hear her ideas. So I think.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Juliet. So does that sound good then? Because I think I was thinking independent study or things like that. Credit recovery, you know, I I don't know if that kind of fits in fitting with what you do, but I'd like to explore those more and then and then have follow up.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other, any other comments? Got the subject? Okay. And I would hope that this may come with me in on that too. Great idea, maybe do so. I think I want to follow the crap, so I want to make sure that we follow up with us and give us the magic we need. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, bye bye.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to this. We make a bill trip. Well, the return out is the insurance for all the water stuff. I was wondering about that too. We just want to make sure. All that potent boss and. And I ask it was normally a. Original notes. And far from those.
The 200. It's written here, two hundred points of trouble.
Yeah, that can be. Yeah, so this is going to be put on in conjunction with the Mid Klamath Watershed Council. They got a big grant called the Whale Tail Grant, so they can provide camping and food and all of that. So I think the only things was gas that I put on there for the vans. $250 of gas and two vans. Yep. Anything else I put on there? I think they're covering everything else. Well, yeah, well, that's what I was just concerned about would have been nice, you know, build the that's that you had it covered and I never, but ultimately it's the insurance that. Do they have insurance? Are they insuring the trip? I don't know. I'm texting mine. She was like, you come here and say so that she could speak to it because she started the watershed capital with low the grant. She's like, well, it takes you ages. Like, can I put on like speakerphone or something? If she finished though, or are you going to follow up? So it's too late. Well, she's like, it'll be too late. I've got to be actually set up minutes. Well, we can always, we probably covered this again after our. After our close. We thought it was going to be after our close session. So I was like, yeah, I got to be sure. Okay. Well, you're on the consent agenda and and then we put it to the public line. I didn't realize, not this session, that actually moved it up. I shouldn't have put it down. But no, that's okay. We just will just move it to, if everybody's okay, we'll just move it to like the agenda act items or whatever comes after.
So yes, the question is, in the past, we've struggled with our gateways cover with water activities. Although we have done the jet boat ride before.
Okay.
I guess we need to check with.
Yeah, we did a preliminary check and I want to pull it because our preliminary check didn't look good, but I want to make sure we do a good check. Sure. Honestly, no.
Yeah. So here, so here are some.
We don't have to do the jet boat things. I was told in the past that if we have a lifeguard, that we could do some things like that. So we have a lifeguard will be there and we'll pay for her time to be there. But if we can't do that at all, that's fine. If we want to find workarounds and have to try and ensure it or something, and if we can get away with that, then we'd love to do something like that. Yeah, that's, but that can be.
How see to do the canoe runs?
I don't think we do that. I can't. And I don't think we would.
We've never done either.
I mean, in my experience, we've done. Yeah. And that's why I just wanted to, because I don't want to say no if we, if there's a workaround. I want to readily. Well, and you could just say no to that part. The rest of the trip would become plenty of other things to do. We just thought it'd be great experience for our kids to see that part of the river in that way and the super time. It's for Europe. Europe.
Have some change around the insurance for.
Well, they're not. So I don't know. I don't, that's why we've got to experiment. We're not supposed to. I heard that before that. Yeah. Maybe it's changed. But that's a last we check. But if there's a way to do it, we'd love to, but if we can't do it, that's fine. We can't. So make sure that while we can approve your your trip, your campus trip, that no one has any other objections and just say, tell people, and they have to do the water and tell them. That was the only thing we were going to do. Well, tide pooling, we were going to go get the tide pooling. Yeah, I don't think you could do that either. And we have a lifeguard on you. Well, at least that was my ass. We have the. Well, I know when I go and message was going. They don't go back to the beach. And I'm only going to say it because I'll tell you a story. If I did hear about the school district, went to the shelter code and did the beach thing, and one of their kids got washed off and drowned. So I know that it happened. I know everybody's careful, but I also just, I mean, I know insurance coverage changes and this and that. I just want all the time because I can find out by today, by today, Karen. And I don't want to say no. I, I, but I'm cool with everybody wants to approving the trip and then just checking with our insurance to make sure anything that has to do with the water. I saw that you have a lifeguard and I, you know, I don't know if that counts. If you have the open water lifeguard, because I know they're different than others when we pull. Yeah. So those are things that we have to check. Okay. Would you like me to have Maya come here so we can be business or we can approve it and circle back? I think that we need to know the insurance is the big thing. Okay. You know, insurance friends are lost. Yes. So.
Are there, okay, like traditional labor or something is a part of the field trip?
We've, we've asked our lawyers about that and a good lawyer gets all, gets laid around the week. I mean, the the school district will be liable unless there's certain things in place. And we just wonder, and and we can add that issue again too, if the insurance company has an indicator that they could use that will be, that will work, that that's what they always tell us. And a good lawyer will get all the pay around.
We do something similar with, because we do sound surveys for students who are in the Creeks. So, but I think that's because Nyquist has their insurance. So it's a, it's a good answer.
And actually, the Creeks are just drafting for your, so maybe that's what probably you know.
To go to Creeks.
They're much bigger. Though they're a mess. Okay, well, if you want to do that then more, if you want to, with the exception of any of the water activities and revisit that, we can always put it back if we find out. So okay, we do a straw vote with the water.
It matches approved a trip and then let water portions are not approved and we say follow through with their insurance. Because if we pull water things off, then that's part of our, our, our motion, right? It's just putting it back on its whole process. But if you just approve it and say, you know, we just do the water portion of the chief covered, then covering herself, but also not.
Well, we just have to let the chief decide what's to.
We're putting in a motion, then it has.
Well, hopefully for a problem. We think, I want you guys watching because.
I love the idea of. And you have the attention, the water against the kind of interest.
Yeah, like leaving the. Yes, okay. And even if we have. Like we're there at the title, maybe we're going to ask and we're going to find out what your lifeguards. Who's going to ask and who should I call? Well. Harvey, Harvey's going to follow up. You are going to check with. Whatever. And I can check with the tribe. I can see the tribe.
Like. Can I get a copy of your lifeguard? Reach out.
Sure. Yeah, but yeah, and if you want to check on your hand. Yeah. And you know, the tide pooling, my understanding would be going with car ranger and they have like, it's like the school, they do this with school.
It's like, it feels like. You know, provide me, you could provide, email me, but when it is something, when the people make that.
Yeah, but I think I've got enough information here. Just they've got a body.
They didn't have a lock in here. So it's like. If it's an empty, then that's just more information.
Well, that I want to say. Every single one of you. Yeah. At least I just wanted. Maybe because of the times that we can't find, you know what I mean? So we just wanted, so you guys wanted, so do you like your motion to push the. So we just want to, so you guys want, so do you like your motion to put the or why don't we just put it back on the consent agenda, so that then it can be approved? Should I ask my, I don't know, per manner. Just moving down to the action, I don't, I don't think she got, she had. She might be able to, she might be able to gather more information. If she, if she has more information, of course, that would be great, but we, you know, this just wasn't, uh, an uninformation, especially about the glass holding, and we don't, we don't want to stop today. Okay. Okay, so that brings us back to. Okay, that was just another comment on close session items. And, and then we will, um, turn to close session at